I will email you there.
Yeah, sorry.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I know, but I thought we would give an email from the website, right? 7:01, we'll call the Lake Elmo City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 2 to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item B on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I understand that some councilmember Hearn would like to pull something.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item number nine to the regular agenda, please.
Okay, we'll pull item number nine and make that regular agenda item number three.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right. Anything else, or I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Support.
A motion in a second to approve an amended agenda with the consent agenda number nine being moved to number three on the regular agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda, amended agenda is approved. Julie, do we have any public comments or inquiries not pertaining to the agenda this evening? Okay. So item D is we have approval of the minutes from the 8:19 to 25 city council meetings, unless somebody has something that's incorrect in there, would like something changed. I'll entertain a motion on approval of the meeting minutes from 8:19.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the minutes from 8:19 to 25. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, moving right along. We have the consent agenda, which is approve payments and dispersments, approve release of warranty security for public improvements at North Star Third Edition, approve well number two PFAS water treatment plant pay request, approve well PFAS water treatment plan change order, accept bids and award contract for the 2025 Seal Quote Project, accept quotes and award contract for the 2025 striping project, number seven, approve water meter purchase, number eight, approve public works shop floor resurfacing, ten, approve financial analyst and utility billing clerk job description, number eleven, approve financial analyst and utility billing clerk wage increase. If everybody's copacetic with that, I'll entertain a motion on approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign, hearing none, consent agenda is approved. Our regular agenda, notably, most people are here for item number two. However, we do have somebody that online that was told they'd be on at 7:10, so we're going to go ahead with the public works operational assessment. As we turn this over to Mr. Kirsch, who you're going to present this.
Can you, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yeah.
And?
Oh, just a second, Brian.
Hold on, Brian. We just wanted to introduce this mayor and council we've been working with, Raff Tellis, since the beginning of the year about, on this public work operational assessment. And as you'll recall, in May, they did present to you the draft report and have taken feedback from the council and incorporated that into the final report. And so we spent a lot of hours meeting with them as a team, going over, learning more about the department and going through their recommendations. And so we are excited to be here and we all thoroughly support the recommendations that have been presented. And so, you're right, Brian from Raff Tellis is online to run us through a presentation, but then the rest of us are here to help answer any questions as well.
Great. I think that's your cue.
Thank you, Nicole. And can you see the present, my presentation on your end?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fantastic, excellent. Unfortunately, you guys are on a tiny little two-inch box, like, won't be able to see who, who was speaking, but I'm happy to engage in conversation as we go along. As you know, we were there in, in May, we, we took some feedback, we're here. I want to focus more of the time on benchmarking today. We will go over the major recommendations again as we go through, but again, we want to be cognizant of your time. So before we dive into some of the benchmarking, I do want to always caveat benchmarking that it is a useful tool for providing some indication as to how organizations are, are similar or different from other-like organizations. Benchmarking is a poor tool for determining whether someone is a better organization than another, it's not a ranking exercise. But there are things we can learn from it, and with that, we'll go into the benchmarking exercise. We're not going to read through all the numbers in the table here, but the primary source of data that we're using for this is the 2023 annual comprehensive financial reports data from the peer communities as well as Lake Elmo. Working with count, with staff, we identified about seven peers, North St. Paul, Hugo, Stillwater, New Brighton, Oakdale, Forest Lake, and Mounds View. They're all roughly the same size as Lake Elmo, up to about twice the size of Lake Elmo in the case of Oakdale and, and New Brighton. And we have some basic statistical data from them, as well as everyone's reported FTEs as they've allocated them. Now, for Lake Elmo, rather than using the ACFR data, we are using the time card data for 2023, as it was reported by them. And when we look at benchmarking data, there are two major kind of takeaways we get from some, from some of the analysis. One is that Lake Elmo's service needs differ from its peers, and we'll look at a few examples of how this is the case, and also that Lake Elmo is, if anything, more lightly staffed than its peers. Now, what does it mean that their service needs differ from its peers? Well, in one case, it's the fact that the city's dealing with growth in a way that its peers simply are not. We look at the percent change in population between 2019 and 2023, population of Lake Elmo grew by almost 22%. Hugo's grew by exactly half that, and none of the other peers otherwise had, had any significant growth in that time period. And just dealing with the process of bringing on new customers, new residents, obviously entails its own workload that these other communities don't have that Lake Elmo does. Another indication that Lake Elmo's service needs are different than its peers is that it's a less dense community than its peers. If we look at population per miles of street, this might seem like an odd metric, but it tells us something about the density of the city. Lake Elmo has 139 residents per street mile. North St. Paul is almost exactly twice that. And on one hand, it has a minor implication for workload in that public works crews are going to have a little more windshield time getting to their various sites throughout the town. But it also is an indication that the city is having to maintain a greater number of assets per resident than its peers do. Just doing the math a little bit here, Lake Elmo's population per street mile corresponds to each resident having 38 feet of street that they have to maintain, whereas New Brighton would only have to maintain 16 feet per resident. You can see why that would, might influence staffing needs. We see the same thing with population per mile of water pipe. Again, Lake Elmo is less dense than its peers, significantly so in many cases. And in, when we get to sewer pipes, we have kind of the exception that proves the rule. Here, Lake Elmo's actually has greater, the greatest number of residents per mile of sewer pipe. This has more to do with the fact that the city is not universally sewered. But overall, given that the density that we see in the city and the growth that we would, that we have seen in the city, we would expect that, everything else being equal, Lake Elmo would have greater staffing needs for public work services than its peers. But when we look at the data, we find that that's really not the case. We look at residents per public works FTE, we see that Lake Elmo, based on their time card data, is basically the highest, technically second highest, Forest Lake beats them out by a hair. In benchmarking terms, this is a physical tie, to be honest. The next closest here is North St. Paul, which has about 10% heavier staffing than Lake Elmo, and the other peers have significantly less, or significantly greater staffing rates than the city. We can look at this through a few other lenses as well. Miles of streets maintained per streets FTE. Lake Elmo maintains 15.2 miles of streets per streets FTE. The highest amongst the peers, next highest was Stillwater at 13.8. Everyone else was significantly, maintained significantly fewer miles per streets FTE. Again, we see this with water pipe, with miles of pipe maintained per water FTE. Lake Elmo has the highest miles of pipe maintained per FTE. Oakdale comes close, everyone else is significantly lower miles of pipe per FTE. Finally, we see sewer, sewer pipe, miles of pipe per sewer FTE. The city comes in with the second greatest length of pipe maintained per FTE, being beaten out by Forest Lake in this, in this case here. If we were to, to change our viewpoint to a national level and compare Lake Elmo's number of water accounts served per water FTE as surveyed by the American Water Works Association as part of their benchmarking survey that they do, we see that Lake Elmo's number of accounts served per FTE is almost twice that of the AWWA 75th percentile. That means that 75% of surveyed respondents are more heavily staffed at that 75th percentile. As you can see, Lake Elmo is well beyond that. And we see a repeat of that sort of pattern, again, when we look at sewer accounts served per sewer FTE. I would, I don't want to say discount, but somewhat take into account the fact that most of the respondents to the AWWA survey will be larger, more complex utilities that would have higher staffing levels just by the very fact that they have more complex waste, wastewater and water treatment facilities than the city does. So given those, that benchmark information, that informs the sort of situation we see with some of the general observations that we glean from reviewing data and then also speaking with all of the staff. Growth is really the number one drive, workload driver within the department, and we've seen growth in workload that has far outpaced the rate of population growth in many cases. We found a department that provides a high level of service, it's identified appropriate service level targets and has been able to meet those targets. However, continuing to meet those targets, given current staffing levels, is likely unsustainable. One of those things that has enabled them to meet those levels is the fact that much of the city's infrastructure is new. You're not dealing with the breaks and the failures that you would expect of an older system. Obviously, this will change over time, and how the city is able to maintain that infrastructure over time will, will help influence how quickly that system ages as well. And so we want the city to be able to plan for this proactively. The department last added an operator position in 2019. That's a significant, one, because operators are frankly the ones out in the field, turning the wrenches, exercising valves, flushing the system, doing the actual labor that needs to be done. But just from 2019 to 2023, the department has had rapid growth in its major service areas. And we can characterize this with a 74% increase in sewer customers, about a 40% increase in miles of sewer pipe and water customers, a 55% increase in water pipe length, and a 23% increase in park acreage. So not, it's not just sewer pipes and water pipes that, you know, cause more work, but there are valves attached to them, hydrants attached to them that need to be winterized or flushed, other appurtenances.
Mr. Kirsch, it sounds like, there we go.
Yes.
We could cut out there for just a few seconds.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. About how far back?
You got through that page.
Okay. Um, just to re, just to kind of re illustrate the rate of growth that's been happening, we can look at the sewer customer accounts per public works FTEs, and you can see it's been rapid growth even as the department has grown from 2013 to 2023. The number of customer accounts per public works FTE has also grown substantially. So we're just going to go over the, the major recommendations contained in the report here today. One of the things we recommend did is that, you know, many of the public works projects or work is seasonal or periodic. Operators were not feeling that the communication to them was sufficient, project oriented, it was more task oriented. At the same time, there's an opportunity to help with resource planning in terms of, you know, when are we going to do hydrant flushing, when are we going to do valve exercising, making sure that different projects don't overlap and resources aren't overly taxed. So our recommendation is to create an annual work plan to articulate when significant work initiatives are scheduled or expected to take place. We'll post this in the workplace so that everyone's aware of it, and also, over time, review this periodically, because given the rates of growth the city has experienced, what might take, you know, two weeks this year might take three weeks, five years down the line. So it'll, it'll require certain revision as time goes on. A few observations regarding the staffing levels, as I've, I think, made the point up to now, workloads have increased over the last six years, but operator staffing hasn't. There is a lead operator role, it's not a supervisory position, but sort of is. That position, theory overseas for their span of control is at eight operators, and that's very high for that sort of kind of frontline supervisory type position. Currently, operators are on a one-week rotation when they're on call, and when they're on call, they perform rounds on the water and sewer system. Given that there are eight operators and, and a lead operator, that means once every nine weeks, or about once every two months, they can be expected to be on call and doing those rounds. Some of them reported they're not so comfortable with the system because they just don't get to work with it that often. If you only did something once every two months, it might not be as, as familiar to you as it, as it could be. That sort of infrequency makes it harder to train new operators, harder for existing operators to retain their knowledge, and harder just to gain a feel for the system. On top of that, as the city adds PFAS treatment, that's only going to make the system more complicated to operate. So, given the growth in workload and workload needs that we've seen, our recommendation is that the city increase staffing by two FTEs in 2025 and one in 2026. The goal for 2025 should be to aim to add one operator and one lead operator. That second lead operator will really help with that reduced, will really help reduce that span of control, especially if, if you add more operators to the existing complement. This third bullet point, that the second lead operator should be scheduled opposite during the, the first, during summer hours, that was based off of a, a minor recommendation we had, that the city, for productivity purposes, consider going to a four-ten schedule where you would have one crew working four days a week, Monday through Thursday, I'm sorry, yeah, four days a week, 10 hours a day, Monday through Thursday, and the other crew Tuesday through Friday. In addition to those two operate, two FTEs in 2025, we would recommend another, another FTE be added in 2026. The director should use his discretion to identify which staff member would be most needed for that new FTE. It might be an operator, it might be something in more of a supervisory role. It just depends where the city is at next year, where his workload is at. And if we look a little bit about, you know, what this looks like in, in bigger picture, we're talking about adding three new FTEs here, these bars here represent Lake Elmo's population in 2023 and that are projected forward using population projections provided by the city. These are the high growth rate projections. That gray line going up diagonally across the top, if we were to take the average staffing rate for public works, workers in the peer communities, that is, number of residents per public works FTE, and said, that's just the average, and extrapolate that to where Lake Elmo is based on its population or where it will be, you can see that the current staffing in 2023 and 2024 is greatly below, significantly below that. Adding two FTEs in 2025 accounts for that bump of the little blue line, and then another one in 2026. So these three FTEs are really kind of keeping pace with the growth that the city has been experiencing for the last few years, as opposed to greatly expanding the department out of the blue, if you will. We also recommend that this, the department designate about half a dozen operators as utility specialists. These should be more the more experienced operators, and the intention for this is that on-call and rotations and the rounds that are performed should only be conducted by the utility specialists. The intention here is that it will concentrate and amplify the experience and knowledge in the mechanical treatment components of the utility system. Be, you know, some utilities, there's a culture where people really want overtime and jump at this sort of opportunity. Other places, we're starting to see that's not the case, where people are more reticent to be on-call, more reticent to take over, to volunteer for overtime. So there may be some incentive required to entice operators to be utility specialists if, if the department chooses to go forward with this path. The city also recently lost administrative assistant, who was about .4 FTE to public works. There's significant need for administrative and clerical assistance within the department. We recommend hiring an admin assistant to assist the, with these tasks. Ideally, this person would have public works or utility experience. We don't want this person just to, you know, be completely clerical and focused on filing papers. We want someone who, you know, is, is adaptable and can be computer literate, learn new software packages, able to read and navigate maps and GIS. To help promote their success or make it more likely that they can succeed, we'd recommend creating a binder of SOPs for that person to use to help expand their role. And we'd recommend starting this position at .5 FTEs within the department, but perhaps adjust that in the future as, as needs or capacity may change. Another observation was that the department is using some non-certified operators to do some auto repair and maintenance. We recommend that that not be the case, that only trained individuals be conducting auto repair. Recommendation is to either hire a certified mechanic or to sign a service contract with a local vendor. This isn't a core function of the public works department. It's okay if that function does exist in there, that person should be certified and properly trained for issues of safety and liability. In reviewing the city's parks master plan, there was a call for a parks director. However, the master plan did not provide guidance on the role or scope of that position. It's very rare to have a parks director without a separate parks department or staff. So our recommendation here is that stakeholders should collaborate as to the proper role, title, timing, scope, as to what this parks leadership position should involve, as well as where it fits in within, within the structure of the city's organization. The city does use Beehive as an asset management system, they're doing very well with that, I think. It, however, lacks a parks module, so that does create some workflow issues. It's, however, not used as a work order system currently, or has not been, and operators pretty much only use it as the GIS type mapping tool for locates out in the field. Our recommendation is to implement Beehive as a full computerized maintenance management system for public work. So that means to obtain the parks module and issue tablets to operators in the field, develop Beehive's capabilities to issue and track work orders. This, if you start recording time on task, will help be able to make the case for, more specifically where time is being spent, where they need help. They can track work order aging, backlog, those sorts of things that currently can't be done without work orders. And then, and we see this frequently in utilities sadly, is that people kind of skimp on training at the outset, and so it's not well adopted, and because no one comes back for additional training, sometimes a CMMS can sublance or be used inconsistently across an organization. So our recommendation includes, a, a recommendation to invest in training for, for staff, and that's a good investment that pays off in the long term. And so I'll conclude my prepared remarks right now and open that, open it up for discussion or questions if you have any.
Questions for Mr. Kirsch? Thank you for that. Anyone?
No.
No? Councilmember Holtz?
More so for staff. And thank you, Mr. Kirsch, for all that, for coming back with the changed presentation based upon the last meeting, appreciate it. For Beehive, because I know we've talked about this before, as to it is being implemented, but obviously, I am not aware of what's going on in the field today. Where do you see? on in the field today. Where do you see things are at, at this moment in terms of that implementation? How, how much is it being used right now?
Yeah, so when I started in 2019, it was there and nobody had used it. It wasn't getting populated with data efficiently enough to, for the guys to use it on-site when they go into developments and such. So we started working immediately with engineering, started rotating, getting that stuff downloaded a lot faster. All the guys are using it for sure daily to kind of navigate our system, whether it be water, sewer. When we do our hydro flushing, our valve exercising, our jetting, we're populating what gets completed each day. They write up immediately work orders for a specific item. Let's say a hydrant needs repair. That gets populated in there. As far as the work order portion of it, Adam and I are currently the ones that are entering that information, and in all honesty, we are struggling to find the time to get that information in there when we can just print and hand it off. So that is the one thing that we need to work, work on more is the work order.
Would you anticipate as it, as it does expand more, that, would the accuracy of our data for utility costs be improved, or is it, is it already accurate to begin with? Like, say, a certain work is being done for this, but maybe ends up we are charging the utility instead of, say, the department itself?
So obviously, we have to, we have to enter in costs, you know, and then cost change, you know, per foot, et cetera. But City Woodbury, for example, uses it for snow removal, and, I mean, they're obviously massive and have a lot of support layers, but each snow event, they know almost precisely on what each snow event costs, with how much salt is used, and each route that was accomplished with this certain vehicle, and how much fuel is tied to the fuel system and such. So there's, it's, it's super strong. It just, we got a little time to get there, is what we need.
So is that next step, then, just implementation more with staff, so it's taking workload off of you too?
For sure, yes. The work order system is what we really want to strive for first, and then educating the staff on how to use it. Next, in '26, we're going to implement the iPads, so they can actually enter in information in the field, right, instead of, at the end of the day, you know, all sit down and trying to remember what they did.
It is vastly preferable to do it live. With SOPs, with the discussion of the admin staff, where is, because I don't know where each department is, I know we've talked about it in other departments, where is your department at for SOPs?
We have a binder of SOPs for certain tasks. Not every task is in there. We have hired SaferSure as our training consultant, and they have a list of many, many tasks related to public works. So that information is there. We just need to sit down and fine-tune it, particular to our situation. So it's there. Again, we just need a little bit of time to, to fine-tune it and enter it in.
Gotcha. And then, in terms of, because we had the discussion previously back in May, but, I mean, I have my preference for a service contract over continuing to use staff myself, but what, do we know from other cities generally what are, what's expected for that type of service contract?
So I've reached out to a couple of our service providers that we currently use. Neither does service contracts, but we are what they call a preferred customer, so like,
Oh, good.
plowing equipment go down, they, they get us in like, quick, like, so we can get back on the road. They've been very good with that. There's kind of a discounted rate that we also get. So we, we have an interest in ASE certification, so that's being discussed internally. An internal applicant is kind of interested in maybe investigating that, and that would be just for light vehicles. All our bar heavy equipment stuff would still be sent out until we determine that a, a need is, is there where we would hire somebody inside. We're not there yet.
Gotcha. Last one, and then I'll let others have the floor. Because obviously, tonight, I mean, we're not voiding, I mean, we're just voiding to accept the report. We're not, I assume we're going to have future meetings to then discuss what we want to do. When that time comes in the, in the coming weeks, possibly a month, what do you, what do you want to bring to us then, in terms of discussion points for, you know, obviously, Raptelis has their recommendations, multiple ones, not just the FTEs, but what do you, how do you anticipate wanting to move forward with this?
So the first, the next thing would probably be the admin, right? And it sounds like that'll be a shared admin that'll be located at City Hall. You'll probably see that first. We're working on changing job descriptions right now. We also need some buy-in with the team, and we started those conversations. If we do the, the specialist, utility specialist group, we have three that are interested right now, then we'd be looking at adding in a utility specialist lead. So those are things that, that need union approve the pay structure, and anytime we change the on-call schedule, that has to be so. That's not going to be quick. I, I, we're going to get the ball moving right away, but I don't know how quick that'll actually get approved by the union, so we can hire those positions, since they're changing.
Because I, I assume, like, on your end, there's going to be, like, an organizational, new chart, new long-term plans to help figure out how this is aligning. Because it, I mean, their recommendation is obviously for multiple years. I mean, are you thinking multiple plans, short-term, long-term? Like, what do you, how do you see this playing out?
Well, right now, I would say we kind of have an idea for the, the three to five year. I think in 10 years, this city is going to be something we're not quite sure what it's going to be. So, you know, we know what we need this year. We have a pretty good idea what we kind of want for next year, and that still has some fine-tuning to, to develop that position. And then after that, it's, it could be every other year, if the growth continues, that we add an operator or FTE of some kind, so.
Thank you. I'm Flores, yours.
Does, does Beehive, the Beehive subscription offer training to subscribers? So let's say you bring on the new FTEs or the admin person. Somebody like that could probably take care of work orders or help do work orders.
Hold it, Adam. He's kind of our expert on the Beehive, so maybe he can.
Yeah, Beehive was just bought up by Civic Plus, which is also another firm that we use for our website. So yes, I do have a background information for, for training as well. So it wouldn't be hard to put that person in a place to be trained on how to use the asset management part of it, as well as the work order part.
Okay. You had a question, Councilmember Jackson?
Marty, in the benchmarking comparisons, did we factor in services at other cities and our city contract out? For instance, we contract out cleaning our buildings. We contract out a lot of mowing. And so, or do we just take information from their ACFers and, and use that without consideration of services that are contracted out?
Right. I, I think as Brian, you know, as we've talked with Brian, there's, there are different things that are not the same as us. So they're not all apples to apples by any means.
So basically, the information, what was in the back of the ACFer?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, so just to piggyback on that, the mowing, for instance, as we go through time and increase FTEs, is that something that, that we would look to take care of ourselves as a city, or?
So when I started in 19, I did relook at that, and we had a, we struggled finding seasonals, right? And paying a full-time operator what they're paid did not justify what, you know, what we could contract it out for. Now contracted services are going up, so maybe there'll be a balance, and we can definitely relook at that. Even three years ago, we could not mow and, and maintain, purchase, maintain our equipment, fuel, for the price that we could contract it out. So, but we can definitely keep looking at it every two, three years.
Any other questions?
I'm just wondering, I was trying to look at the budget here. How is this reflected in the 2026 budget that we had back in August? Was there any positions that we added into the budget based off of the presentation tonight, or?
Yeah, so we, we did budget for one FTE.
In the parks?
I'm sorry?
Wh- where was that in the budget? I'm just not seeing it.
It was in the Clarissa.
I believe it ended up, it would have been split similar to all the other positions. So all of our public works positions are allocated across multiple departments. So it, it would have been.
Was plus, just plus one FTE?
One FTE for '26, right? Without knowing exactly what we are going to propose, it was a little tough to, you know, decide if we're going to be budgeting for a supervisor role or just an operator. So I think we just kind of did a middle-of-the-road.
And there's the recommendation for two operators in 2025. Is that in the 2025 budget?
That is.
So if that doesn't happen this year, then we're looking at carrying that over to the 2026 budget, actually, then?
Which it'll be, it's already in the 2026 budget for these, you know, starting in '25, that increase stayed in '26.
Sure. Okay.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, if that's all, entertain a motion.
Move to accept the public works operational assessment conducted by Raptelis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Who won that?
Nick gets it.
It was close.
He's louder voice.
I really wasn't even going to go down that road.
Hey, the minutes need.
Ah, thank Cragness, thank you for the second.
You did it in the nick of time.
All those in favor of the motion to accept the public works operational assessment conducted by Raptelis, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign, hearing none. It's accepted as, as delivered. Thank you, Mr. Kirsch, appreciate your time. Thanks, staff, for all the effort that you guys put into that. All right. Item number two, this is brought up on from some comments that we've had in, in our public comments and inquiries. Wanted to address some of the noise issues we're hearing about from the pickleball courts. Is this, is this Adam's item?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. In 2023, it was in front of you, and we worked on putting together the new pickleball courts that took place at Tablin and Pebble Park. Since that time, or since the actual implementation of pickleball courts in Ivywood as well, we received two complaints regarding the noise from pickleball. These complaints came from areas of Ivywood and Pebble Park. Both complaints were from neighboring homes, which are less than the newly recommended 600-feet setback that was initiated in our parks master plan in 2024. And again, in 2023, the city council approved the reconstruction of those tennis courts at Tablin and Pebble to accommodate both tennis and pickleball. At the time of approval, city council recommended measuring noise levels to determine the noise and the need for a sound barrier. Staff monitored the noise levels at Pebble Park on two separate occasions when those courts were full. The average noise decibel at the property line between, was between 47 and 53 decibels. Current city ordinances restrict noise that exceeds six decibels above the ambient noise levels that were designated in Minnesota statutes, which is 60 decibels during park hours. The issue before us tonight is, does the city council want to make changes to the pickleball court noise complaints? And if so, what changes are directed? Staff did measure approximate distances from our four parks that do have pickleball courts. Those are listed in the packet, anywhere from 184 all the way up to about 297 feet. Again, with that restriction, and our new parks master plan is 600 feet, all those fall below that recommended level.
What distance were we going off before we knew about that recommended distance?
We really didn't have one listed in, in the prior parks master plan.
Okay.
Continue on. We're looking for direction from the city council. If they'd like to elect allowing courts to exist within that 600 feet, if we want to reduce that, or if we want to maintain that 600 feet and remove our pickleball courts that we currently have, and convert those over into other operations, such as basketball courts, hockey rink, or volleyball, hard volleyball court surfaces. We have discussed in the past, as well, sound barriers as well. I think in our initial conference, we discussed that. Staff is not recommending a noise barrier of any of these sites, as the current noise levels have not exceeded the current city ordinances. The initial cost of $35,000 was, was discussed, was only going to cover two sides of that court. You know, we can definitely increase those amounts from 2023, and double those amounts if we were to do that court. Staff's suggestion would be, if you're going to do one, likely have to be looking at all three, because they do all three fall within the, less than that 600-feet distance. We did meet with the Parks Commission in regards to the pickleball noise in, at the August meeting. The commission is recommending to change the playing hours at Lions and Pebble Park from dawn to dusk, starting in 2026. This would eliminate the need for lighting at either park during the summer hours and would likely create more quiet time in late evenings. Four recommendations or four suggestions were given to the Park Commission meeting in August. That was their suggestion or recommendation to city council based off those four. Again, doing nothing, reducing those hours, reducing those distances were, were those four items, so. At this time, with staff's recommendation, there's no financial obligations. Any action by city council would be implemented going forward at the schedule of city council's discretion. If future plans do include construction or replacement of courts in different locations, this would be considered as a new CIP item. So if we would remove our courts or we construct new ones, those would be CIP items for them. At this time, I'll take any questions. Again, our recommendation would probably be just to reduce playing hours on those pickleball courts from dawn to dusk, or the shorter the allowed time for users in those neighboring areas.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions for Director, Assistant Director, Councilmember Hearn?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Since the parks meeting, I know you'd mentioned at that point, you hadn't really spoke to too many other surrounding communities as far as how they've mitigated sound or what they've done. Have you had a chance since the parks commission meeting to maybe reach out to Stillwater, Oakdale, other communities, how they've went about mitigating the noise issues?
Yeah, so Eagan and, Burnsville, use a mitigation form. It's called acoustic. It's made especially for pickleball. I did talk to the manufacturer, as well as an organization in Florida that uses it. It does mitigate the sound, but it does direct it in a different area. So it is a hard, it's a harder, stiffer plastic that is put up on the fence. It does make the sound go in, but then it also goes up, so it still has to go out. Another product that is on the line that we referred to in a first meeting is more of a, a material that's made of fiberglass. It's got material in it, put on the outside of the fence. It does mitigate the sound more and, and it absorbs that more. Our current fence that are, there are some downfalls of that, of course. Our current fence, fence would not hold either, either of those products. They are about 100 pounds. They're six feet wide, 10 feet tall. So each one of those sections, all the way around that, that fence does add weight to that. So redoing that fence would be needed. So redoing that fence would be needed.
Okay.
Um, another downfall is that you don't have, is, is the wind, right? Wind, you're putting a hard surface there, now you're creating a more, um, structural surface that it's gonna blow against. Um, likely gonna tip over with the sound of our, our current fence. Uh, wind inside of it also is obstructed, so you're putting up pretty much a, a concrete surface or not concrete, a, a large border around it, so you do not have any air movement inside that courts unless, you know, a large gust could go over. But, um, you are mitigating the air movement in there as well. The final one would be that you are surrounding that again. Um, you are looking at items that happen that can't be seen from the public on the outside. So you would be looking at potentially some more violence or some other things that, um, that would wreck or just graffiti and things like that that might happen in there after hours that you might not see on a regular basis.
Did, and that's super, that's really helpful to, to hear some of the options. How about, I mean, did the communities talk at all about as far as after implementing those strategies? How that impacted the, the residents nearby? Were there less complaints? Were there less issues with the noise? Or like you said, once they put it and the, the noise goes up and it still has to go out was, were the complaints still there? It didn't change the actual community feel about it?
Yeah, so like, uh, for instance, Burnsville wasn't able to have that conversation of what it, what it, they installed there is twenty-two, twenty-three. You know, did it fix the solution? It's a, it's a solution, right? Um, the other, the other one was, it's a temporary solution, right? Um, these do have a longevity of only five to fifteen years potentially, or sorry, five to ten years. You know, then you are replacing them again. So, um, you know, as far as the community response, I mean, it does mitigate it for, for initially the most part. Um, you know, is it a future solution for the whole works? Might not, not, may not be.
Some discussion about, was there any discussion about using some different materials? I'm sorry, I'm ignorant on the whole pickleball things and I'll play pickleballs, value my Achilles tendon. But my understanding is it uses a plastic ball or there, there's, uh, then there was some discussion of maybe using foam balls. Do they, do they act the same? Do they weigh the same? Do they?
Yeah, so there is other options a- as far as the ball, the ball that you could use, the court surface itself. They can put a rubberized court on there as well, again, costs more money. As far as the user itself, they could change that. It's just like asking someone who plays golf to use a Nerf ball now instead of a regular golf ball, right? So they do have, uh, um, those are, that are competitive, wanna use the one that.
Right.
We could engineer a quiet pickleball. I felt the same, we'd be, uh.
Yes, well, and because that was my question, the American Pickleball Association has approved ones that specifically are both a softer racket and a softer ball. I was, I was curious, like, in the case of Burnsville, if you spoke with them, if they had even mentioned that. I, the question I was gonna be posing is, are there ways we know where other cities have encouraged? We can't, we can't force and monitor and say, you can only play here if you're using that ball. But if there's ways or solutions that are out there where that started to be an education and a movement, because that is way more effective than a diffuser, because what you're describing is a diffuser. For one, to put the sound up, that's just diffusing it. The absorbers and other op is completely different.
Councilmember Holt, uh, some of the research I did over the weekend on this, um, they did try to promote the soft paddles and the soft balls and stuff. And it was unsuccessful after a year and a half because, um, there was no one there to enforce it. So people were still showing up with the, with the, the balls of their choice and the paddles of their choice. And then the complaints continued. Is it an option? Absolutely. Uh, the next thing would be who's gonna enforce it and how.
I highly doubt deputy wants to be enforcing the racket of choice, but yeah, here's a thought. Thank you.
Here.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Either of those cities restrict the hours similarly what we're talking about here as a potential mitigation?
I did not see anything that was a solution that we came up with on our own.
Correct.
Yeah.
Give a couple more.
Yes, go ahead.
So I was, with the six hundred foot distance that was in the, uh, the, the Parks Plan, I was trying to think through, I mean, do we even have a park where we could put a pickleball court that's within, with, beyond the six hundred foot mark of the nearest house?
So, no, we don't, we don't, unless you're gonna put in the middle of Sunfish Lake Park, right?
Okay.
So, which we can.
Potentially your seventy-seven acres.
Yeah.
Sure.
It would have to go in the middle.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That leads me to my other question of, is there other communities that have pickleball courts at that six hundred foot mark that are getting complaints still? Or do we have any information on that?
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of communities that are going through the same, same rhythm rule that we might be going through, right?
So with the, with the sound, um, issue.
So, yeah, we're not the only ones in this boat that are. Uh, I, our neighboring towns definitely have, um, pickleball courts that are within that distance, you know, and do hear those complaints as well.
But moving it past six hundred feet, did that decrease people complaining about it?
From, from the research I did, it, it was, uh, the best solution.
Okay.
That they, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Have we had any other complaints from the, for lines, lines or tablin pickleball courts?
Just the lights.
The lights, okay. It is interesting, the sound just, it seems different at Lions Park. I don't know if it's because it's more open, I guess more discussion, but.
I mean, I do live next to it, it is loud.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you know it's not from the mayor, so. In terms of, because you'd mentioned it, and I, I've seen it before. Obviously, another strategy is the material self that you're playing on. And obviously, the courts are brand new anyways, so resurfacing is not anytime soon. But do we know of others who have used that as a strategy where they're either putting this, the spray layer on or just entirely different type of material? Where it maybe is having the same feel for a player, but the sound creation is not the same? Or is that still a, a new and developing thing that's not yet?
No, that, the product is out there, right? But I think the noise comes from the ball.
Right, and the paddle.
It's not the surface.
Valid.
Um, when I was the one that, that did the sound study one of the times, and at no time did the ball ever, I, from my memory anyway, exceed like thirty-two decibels. When we did get that one sixty decibel, um, it was somebody screaming into, you know, excitement about missing your, the ball.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or we do have some people that wanna talk? All right, um, so, uh, we've got a number of people that would like to talk on this issue. So my nice ask is that if someone prior to you has indicated something that you wish to expand upon or say the same thing, it's okay to say my comments have been said before related to X, Y, or Z. That's okay. Um, we'll keep decorum in the council chambers at all times. I'll give you, uh, six minutes, which you wanna talk about your particular item. And, uh, so when I call your name, you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, for our record keepers to put, put that in. And, um, the first person here is Paul Boltman.
Do these both work?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Paul Boltman. I live at eighty-two, forty-three Deer Pond Court. I've lived there for twenty-four years. I loved living there for twenty-two and a half years. I'm here to speak in favor of the report's recommendation based on the Parks Commission August eighteenth motion to change the playing hours. And I believe the motion actually was sunrise to sunset, not dusk to dawn. You might wanna double check on that. However, I hope the council understands that this amounts to a very, very minimal mitigation to the problems caused to homeowners who live adjacent to the park or the courts. Eliminating the use of the court lights will help some of my neighbors whom that is a huge problem. I'm fortunate enough to have enough tree cover between myself and the courts that it's not a big problem for myself, but it's a huge problem for some of my neighbors. However, the major problems is the noise generated by the activity, and they will be barely addressed if all you do is change the hours. The noise of the paddles hitting the balls and the voices and yelling of the participants are major problems for the residents around the courts. The incredibly loud sound of paddles hitting balls is, is known as an impulsive sound. Unlike merely annoying noises such as road traffic or lawn mowers, impulsive noises trigger a stress response in humans. And this leads to serious health consequences over time. When I hear the pop of the paddle hitting the ball, I feel myself tense up. And it doesn't let up on the second hit or the third hit or the nine-hundredth hit we might hear in an hour. I feel tense every time. This is a public health issue. The staff report mentions that the noise levels does not exceed the noise ordinance. I don't pretend to be an expert on acoustics, but I've read that due to the very short duration of the noise of the paddle hitting the ball, it is difficult, difficult to get an accurate reading of the decibel level. And it takes sophisticated, sophisticated equipment and advanced knowledge to get an accurate reading. However, the problem is not the loudness of the noise, but our exposure to nearly constant impulsive popping sounds. It is known to cause health problems. Changing the hours from sunrise to sunset would provide a small amount of relief. Of course, it is unlikely that participants would stop at sunset, but instead would play through dusk until twilight. And sunset around the solstice is, or twilight around the solstice is nine-thirty. So even doing that would buy us half an hour of quiet time, so it's not a huge difference. And sunrise is the current rule. So that cha, that change would not improve things for people that are bothered in the morning. And sunrise can be as early as five-thirty AM. I want to mention that the Parks Commission August eighteenth motion also included the recommendation that parking be restricted to one side of the street near the Ivywood Courts to provide relief for the people living right there. And because of a safety concern for, um, first responder access when people are parked on both sides of the road. And the, uh, staff report does not even mention that for some reason, but I wanted to make sure it was brought up. In regard to the staff report, I am puzzled by option two. Is the report suggesting that one of the options is to merely move the goalposts as a means to ignore the problem? Again, I, uh, urge you to pass the recommendation that will provide a tiny amount of mitigation to some of the problems caused by the, to the homeowners adjacent to courts. But I also ask the council to please seek and find a long-term solution that moves the courts out of the neighborhood parks to a site that meets the six hundred foot recommendation of the Lake Elmo Parks Plan. And I just want to mention to, uh, Councilmember Cragness's question about the six hundred feet. I did some experimenting and I went out eight hundred feet and you can still hear the pop. Can't hear the voices, I don't think, but you can still hear the pop. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Paul. Almost right on the six minutes, that was, that was good use of time. All right, next we have is, uh, John Hawley.
I think I've seen that movie before, John Hawley, eight-one-nine-zero, Lake Jane Trail North. I live thirty feet from Pebble Park, uh, pickleball court. Um, yeah, what can I say? Uh, Paul, Paul put it in, uh, in good words, um, noise, very noisy, dusty, sixty to forty to sixty cars an hour going in and out of a dirt parking lot. I'm on two inhalers, you can hear my breath even last week at the, uh, Parks Board meeting. I can't get rid of this stuff, the dust, my cars are coated with it. The lights, uh, we thought the lights were a good recommendation. Your lights are shining on about half my yard at night till ten o'clock, lighting up my entire, not my entire, half my yard at night. So I can't believe that's, uh, in the city code that a neighbor can light up the neighbor's yard. But yeah, your lights are horrible. I can't sleep at night. My room is actually the closest one to the pi- pickleball court, so I do get the lights and I get the noise quite a bit. Um, Marty was talking about, they tested it. What he didn't tell us, how many people were on the court? Was it like Sunday when there was about eighty people on the court with amplified music? Um, was it Saturday when it was probably the same amount of people that were out there till ten at night? And it's not just the pop guys, it's the yelling and the screaming. He said it himself, the screaming is unbelievable. Every time they make a play, they gotta yell. The guys are out this morning, seven AM, I'm trying to work, trying to get ready for work. Every play, they're screaming, they're yelling. I'm literally thirty feet away, I can hear everything they say, I can hear it up in my dining room, I can hear it in my bedroom. He talks about they tested noise. What are you using for testing? Are you using a twenty, twenty-dollar Amazon tester? Are you using something that was made for testing the noise decibels? It is loud, it's very loud. The meter themselves, a good meter is gonna cost thousands of dollars, not twenty dollars from Amazon, you'll get a much more accurate reading. But I guarantee you was not up there when they were making the yelling and the screaming. You guys said you've only had two complaints? I wanna register three hundred and sixty-five right now. Who do we complain to? I'm not gonna call him every time a guy's up there hitting the ball and grunting. You think I wanna pull him out of service? Who do I talk to about complaining? I need, give me the complaint line, because I got three hundred and sixty-five I wanna register today. Every single day, that court is the noisiest thing I ever heard. I wrote hockey for twenty-five years, it's nowhere even close to that, nowhere close. Portable music, we gotta do something about that. That, when they bring the radios up, again, this court is elevated, so all the noise carries around the entire neighborhood. When they have a radio on, you can hear it five blocks away. Soundboards, they're ugly. All right, we gotta park here, do we wanna put ugly soundboards up? I don't really want to, it's gonna destroy my view. Sorry, I took about a thousand notes here, I wanna try to keep it down to six minutes. I did have, uh, some older photos of the park before they did the renovations. We had several trees between our house and the park. Some were taken out because of the ash borer. Um, the pine trees, the city in its infinite, infinite wisdom decided to trim those up fifteen to twenty feet. I couldn't really see the, the tennis courts before, and that, that was helping with some noise abatement. Once they got rid of those trees and they trimmed up the other trees, they, uh, now I can see straight into it, so obviously the noise is carrying more, that natural barrier was taken away from me. Um, the other thing that kinda, kinda gets me worked up a little bit is when I go look at the door, there's all kinds of flyers up, put in their plastic, uh, protection. There's four groups that take up ninety percent of the time on those courts. There's one group that has the entire morning, I think it's the Lake Elmo Pickleball Club. Then there's two other groups at night, one's got Tuesday and Thursday, the other got, has all the other days. And they've got it the entire season. I mean, how is that, number one, how is that fair? And how can I sign up to rent the court from five to ten every night? Because I'd love to do that. Next year, I'd love to have that entire thing booked up, because you know what I'd be doing? Just sitting back, relaxing. Just sitting back relaxing at my house like I used to do. So thank you for your time, guys. We're just, we're out here, we're begging for help. Obviously, it started out with one of me a year and a half ago. I came here by myself. We're spreading. I mean, it's obvious a nuisance. So anything you guys can do to help us, we'd, we'd love.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Jennifer Waters.
Jennifer Waters, forty-one eighty, Urban Circle North. It's one N, two Ts. I am one of the coordinators for Lake Elmo Pickleball. We play Monday through Friday from eight AM till ten AM. So we have about a hundred and ten people on our member list. There's probably about thirty, a little more than thirty that actually play routinely. About thirty-eight live in Lake Elmo. On average, we have sixteen players, which is four courts. Twice this summer, we have had six courts running, but that was only twice. I was here in twenty twenty-three when we were talking about putting these courts in Pebble Park and Tablin, and I advised, I was part of our group then, we were formed in twenty twenty, when we played at Lyons before this. And I spoke against putting these pickleball courts in Pebble and at Tablin because they were too close to people's houses. But we're here now. At that time, I believe sound blankets were approved in the amount of forty thousand dollars. That was not implemented because of the sound study. There may be only two complaints. When, when I talked to you people, maybe some of you weren't here, it was that pickleball is noisy. It really is. We laugh, but we are not the people who are cursing and playing loud music, and we know our players. We have a list. We don't charge a membership. We welcome new people who want to play. And we don't put chairs on the courts because that damages them. I'd like to note that the six hundred-foot recommendation came out after construction was complete. I believe it is reasonable for us to start at eight AM. Our group recommends that we remove the practice board that is up. It causes a big booming sound. It's really not necessary. We recommend that we install the sound deadening fabric, because no matter what the solution is in the future, it's gonna be a while. We support having no lights and no play before eight AM or after eight AM. I'd like to note that the city, the city has invested about half a million dollars in these courts. Even if you take down the nets, people are gonna bring portable nets. We really support identifying a better location for these pickleball courts, and hopefully we will find one soon. Any questions for me?
I really appreciate your, your comments. Thank you. How's the other John, John Hammerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I've had the privilege to go through this same discussion with exactly the same problems in another community. I'm blessed that I'm a snowbird and I get to spend the time down in southwest Florida with similar of the problems of being landlocked, having pickleball as an evolving and actually an exponentially increasing sport. And the NIMBY arguments that frequently come in front of council, I've been aware of for a long period of time. We're landlocked. We've got problems with how we're going to use all our resources and use them appropriately. Down in Florida, we have an additional problem with the NIMBY problem in that it's a tennis community that we're in, and the tennis folks are much, much more focused on noise. The birds chirping, a little rustle of leaves drives tennis people crazy. And our solutions down in Florida, which I participated in, involve trying to find tools that we could get along amongst not only the neighbors and the sound of the pickleball, but also with the tennis community. The pickleball courts were developed and were adjacent to the tennis, and it was a significant problem, especially for a tennis-run community. Pickleball is growing. The ideas that have been brought up, softening paddles, putting pads on paddles, using different balls, has been ineffective and has been tried domestically, and there has not been a success that I'm aware of in our research. Other non-spending problems of limiting play has been successful, and it was for us in Florida. Player awareness and education is helpful. Who's gonna please it remains a problem, but that part is critical. And the community engagement to make sure that people are aware of what we're doing and why we're doing it. I need to go back to a little bit of high school physics and get into the weeds a little bit, because I've heard some discussions about what's the science, what's noise, the acoustic levels, what does all that mean? And if we're gonna try and mitigate that, how do we understand that? And I hope to bring a little awareness to where you folks are. If we go back to our physics, remember decibels, DBs is a logarithmic unit. And traditionally, it's a power unit. So three DBs is a doubling of power. That's usually we think of energy. The sound energy for humans, however, is significantly different. For a human to see a doubling or a halving is about ten decibels. So if I speak ten decibels louder, I will double the sound. If I decrease it by ten decibels, it would be half the sound. Twenty decibels, again, another doubling, so it would go to from a half to a quarter of the sound. If I go to thirty decibel decrease, that would be one eighth, eighty-eight percent reduction, or vice versa if I increase that. The national standards that are used, FAA, government, we probably have standards within the city, railroad, mechanic shops, hunters, orange foam, muffs, we try to get to twenty-seven decibel decrease. That's important for a later discussion. There are a handful of ways to mitigate sound. The tools would be hanging the, most commonly the new MLV, the mass-loaded vinyl. It's cheaper. It's the mats that we're talking about handling. They've come down in price significantly because there's significant competition. There are a couple of companies that we researched to find this, and we learned from Quiet Strike that their products reduce the sound levels by about ten decibels or a fifty percent reduction in sound. We heard the top levels measured at fifty-five. I appreciate the comments from John, how do we measure it? But however we measure it, I think a fifty percent reduction in sound would be substantial. Another company, Sport Sonic Guard, boasts a twenty-eight decibel decrease. That would mean an eighty-eight percent reduction in sound. We're already below the threshold. To the other complaints, the percussive noise is a little different than sustained noise. And the other problems with pickleball are that it is irregular. It's not tap, tap, tap. It's the irregular tapping sound. And it's the amplification that happens off the paddle. The paddle is like a drum. When the ball hits it, it creates a pop. And that pop is, to many people, disheartening. We're landlocked, and we don't really have an option to, to move courts and put them six hundred feet from anyplace else. Our solutions in Florida, and what I would suggest as recommendations here, would be that those considerations put not only the sound barriers, the sound mats up, which would be very successful in our experience, my personal experience, and I think domestically, but using the other tools to mitigate sound, which would be landscaping. Bushes, brush. You heard cutting trees substantially changed what happened. Those may be slow processes, but might be instituted not only in the example here, but for future development for our pickleball courts. I think the landscaping using berms, using other structures, and moving things like the current practice board could be very significant. I'd like to go back to a little bit of the history of Pebble Park, nineteen seventy it was created, Washington.
Mr. Hammerly, you got like thirty seconds.
Okay. Let, let me propose that the use of sound barriers could be very successful in our experience. I think we should either rotate the board that's there or remove it so that that is a sound piece that's not present. I think we should limit the hours not to sunrise to sunset, but eight to eight. Because of everything you've heard about where the sun comes, how the sun comes, and how we're gonna use that, I think that is also a fixed point. It's not based on the sun. Promote the community's standards, help patrol, manage costs. I think those are all significant. And I would just like to point out that I was at Pebble Park this morning at, at eight in the morning. There wasn't a single person present. So the seven o'clock one, I don't think is always true from what Jennifer said, so I would challenge that a little bit. And I would, as a final point to mention, I think that the community has become vibrant, healthier. We have eighty hours in the mornings that we're spending with adults playing, in addition to the children that use that park that also scream and yell. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Hammerly.
Lori Hammerly, nine four two nine, Jane Road North, Lake Elmo. Mayor, council members, I'll be very brief. We really appreciate the pickleball courts. I've seen your house, John. I've hit against that board. I'm really sorry I've done that. I've hit against that board. I will never do that again. The board should come down. You've heard all this stuff. I'm not gonna go through that. But I do like the idea of the barriers particularly going up when that home is so close. Why not start with one wall of barriers? There would still be wind coming through. See what sort of effect that has. And that is actually a narrow wall, so it wouldn't even be that expensive. So that's, that's what I would suggest. And also the trees, brush, sound. We know that that helps mitigate that sound. So, and again, thank you for the very nice courts. We love them and we really, it's been wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you. Josh Godbout?
Josh Godbout, I'm at eighty-one hundred, Lake Jane Trail, so on the other side of, of John. It won't belabor all the points that they said, because I agree with, with all of them. But I, I definitely agree with the noise abatement being something that could definitely be of value. Going out on our deck, enjoying the nature, half the reason why we wanted to come to Lake Elmo in the first place. We love to be in the outdoors, and it is almost shocking when we walk outside and don't hear the constant noise. It, it's pretty, pretty much constant. I mean, if we're having dinner on, on the deck and it's actually peace and quiet, it's a complete rarity. We in, in fact, got the loudest water feature we could possibly find to try and dampen the noise that we hear constantly. And we're within three hundred feet of the, of the courts on, on the other side. I just want to stress the, the lights as well. It's like stadium lights coming into our, into our house. It's at the perfect angle. I'm, I'm not sure how it can be so perfect. I mean, it's even comes in right through the, the bedroom windows. I mean, to, to say that we don't open our windows or open our blinds, I mean, it's pretty much a non-starter. It, it kinda, the noise and the, the lights pass when, once it gets dark out, pretty much a non-starter. When our, when we have any guests that come over, it's almost the first thing that they mention to us. You know, because we'll, we'll joke and say, oh, it's, it's definitely loud, and we have guests that'll come over, and the, one of the first comments will be, okay, you, you weren't kidding. It is really that loud. It really is that annoying. And, and we, we love going up over there and, and playing pickleball. We're, we're not against pickleball. I think it's been, been stated a couple of times that we're definitely not against it. I think we're against the location and the noise that it, it brings, but we're definitely not here to ruin people's fun or, or anything like that. That's the, that's the last thing we want to do, because personally, we, we enjoy it as, as well. I just wish it was a, as, as close. And then I guess the other question of, you know, I think it was stated, the, the average decibels. I guess it'd be interesting to see the full report of if it actually did breach that sixty decibels instead of just looking at an average as opposed to what the actual recommendation was. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you very much for everybody's statements. A lot of good information there. Question?
Yes, question.
Question for staff, because I'm the one who made that motion to have, give the administrator the authority to spend money for it, and obviously it didn't happen. What happened with that money? Did it go back in the CIP? Because that's where it was, would have come from?
I can take this quick. So from my summary that, after that meeting, you had made a motion for forty thousand dollars. The mayor had seconded that. We did not get a third. And then it ended up with council direction to add four, install four nets instead of the six to buy us time to see what kind of feedback we got. After a couple of months, we had zero complaints, and the last two were installed based off of multiple requests from pickleball players. So that's where that ended up.
Again, those funds are from park dedication, so we'll go through the CIP.
Thank you.
Could you just speak about the, at the Parks Mission, there was one other public comment about Ivywood, and I think it had more to do with the parking. Have you heard any more from that resident since? I obviously wasn't here tonight to, to give his presentation, or maybe just kind of reiterate that as well?
Yeah, since, since that complaint and then staff reviewed that, I'll be straight up and honest, I'd have to review the, the details of where that laid out. But nothing has been brought up to my attention since then, so.
Because the issue was that there was parking on both sides allowed.
Correct.
And the resident's request was parking on one side of the street.
Right.
And you're saying that had already, that's already been looked into and?
We, we had looked into that, yes, in a council meeting, and I'd have to look back to see where that, where that ended up.
But you haven't changed it to parking just on one side of the street yet?
I don't think we did make changes.
Yeah, I think that discussion actually came when we were looking at placing a, a full parking lot down at Ivywood. The resident, we had a number of residents that had came and talked regarding that. Our fire chief was, was here that night as well, talked about the, the standards that we did have and that it did meet that, and so that's why the changes weren't made.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So if we were to move this six hundred feet out, if following the CIP, would there be any locations right now as it sits where we could put pickleball courts six hundred feet away from residential homes?
Adam can verify, but we looked the other day, and the only park that would maybe work would be in the middle of Sunfish Lake Park. We'd have to clear some trees or seventy-seven acres that we're purchasing, but.
And what was that best-case scenario number? Was it four hundred and fifty feet, five hundred feet?
What's the question?
Like, if you were to put it in the middle of Sunfish, how, how far away would it be? If it's not hitting that six hundred, where is that number landing?
Oh, there are locations in Sunfish that we could hit six hundred feet.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking. Correct.
The mountain bike there?
Yeah, mountain bikers might be affected, some trees lost, but.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a multi-piece motion. Feel free to not support it or whatever, but we've had a solid discussion, and I want to see where we're at. Part one, amend hours for pickleball at all courts except Lyons to nine AM to six PM, and direct staff to install up to fifty thousand dollars of sound-absorbing materials on the east and south side of Pebble Park.
Would that sound deadening only go to Pebble instead of at Lyons as well, or?
Well, can I discuss?
A second.
Yeah, sorry about that.
All right, so my intent there is twofold. One, I don't like the idea of sunrise to sun. The sun changes throughout the year anyways, and what we're hearing, number one, is mornings stink. It varies anyways, so let's just have a set time. And I want people to have freedom in the evenings. I don't like saying, let's go till dusk. I agree, the light issue, let's take care of that. But I think residents should also have some freedom in those media, media houses to enjoy, you know, six, whether it's five thirty- But I think residents should also have some freedom in those media houses to enjoy, you know, six, whether it's five thirty, six, six thirty. I'm open, but not eight or nine. Like, people have families and should be able to sit on their deck and have a meal. In terms of the materials, so, because the description was earlier, so the way sound works, you can use a diffuser. And diffusers change the direction of the sound. Think like in a, when you go to a musical performance and you see a wall that has different shapes on it, that's a diffuser. And the sound hits it and bounces and changes the angle. Whereas my motion is for the absorbing material. And John described it very well. Some, you have a noise coefficient reduction for different materials. And there are different ones that are out there. And the part that's hard is, yes, the best materials don't necessarily hold up well in the weather. That there's a reason for it. So my thought on this is let's go three, four, or five years and see how well this works. And, you know, maintenance is going to be one topic. I have not received a single complaint for noise at our other two sites. Unless maybe some of you have, but I have not. The feedback we've been receiving, and Paul has been in conversations with us for months now. I've been out there. I did make it at a different time when people were out there. And I entirely understand the impulsive sounds. It is a percussive sound, I get it. It's not at sixty decibels. But it is something that is absurd. And I think it is, this is worthwhile to take this kind of step in, which is why I made the motion, you know, two years ago. But I don't know if fifty thousand is the right amount. It might come out to be forty-seven, might come out to be fifty-two. But costs obviously have gone up. And I don't think it's needed on the western or the northern side of that. With that said, the more costly ones have a better noise reduction. So usually, there are some materials that can get you down by twenty decibels, others by ten. But, you know, I think that's something to be seen. I think at a minimum, the goal should be at least fifteen decibels. And then we'll see between that and the hours. Because people have a right to exercise, they should be able to enjoy themselves. But, and I think Jennifer said this, well, let's take some other steps. Move that practice board, remove it if need be. But that would be my recommendation. Nine to six and fifty thousand for the east and south side.
Councilmember Dragicic.
I think, because there's two issues I have with the motion. First, I think nine's too late. I think eight o'clock in the morning would be a more, a better choice. And I think we should run it till dusk or eight o'clock, whichever comes first in the evening. No lights. Lights should just be shut off, be done with them. The other thing, I think we should have a sign that bans radios and other noise making. Because we're hearing a loud complaint about that from neighbors. And I can understand that they're blaring their radio, you know, maybe someone's saying born in the USA or whatever. And you can't hear because of that noise. That's noise we can easily eliminate without affecting people being able to exercise and play the sport. And accommodates the neighborhood.
And I can clarify in the nine, part of it is also is there are kids who are still sleeping past eight with the change in hours for the school district. So there are instances where kids, especially in September, October, May into June, where that's the case. But if eight or eight-thirty is better for you, I fully agree with the, well, I guess I'd be curious for staff.
I have the floor. You interrupted me. I was recognized. I let you speak without interruption.
My apologies.
And my basis of eight is we allow construction to start at seven in the morning under our ordinance. And that's equally as loud or louder than any pickleball, depending on what they're doing. So eight o'clock is kind of a compromise in that regard. The other piece, I'm in favor of the sound deadening, sound absorbing. But I think our Public Works said the fences will not support the weight or the wind resistance. So if we're going to go with that, we're going to have to have an engineer look at that fencing and say, you know, if we put a barrier on there and we have, our ground wind speed in the coat is a hundred and fifteen miles an hour, it's what you have to design for. If that hundred and fifteen mile an hour wind hits that sound and blows the fence over, we haven't accomplished anything. We've made more trouble, more of a mess, and perhaps endangered somebody's life. So if we're going to go along, and I do support sound deadening, we have to find a happy median here. We're going to have to have someone look at that fence and determine what we need to do to make the fence strong enough to resist both the vertical weight and the horizontal wind load that would ensue. I also like the concept of doing some planting of landscape to help have a natural, you know, sound barrier. So you can get down fifteen decibels with the sound absorbing material. And maybe we can get another five with the right kind of landscaping. Combine that with the hours change, you know, taking off that soundboard, saying no radios allowed. I think we find a compromise where the residents aren't, you know, aren't being hassled way early in the morning or late at night. They'll still have some sound, but it'll be diminished. And yet we allow our residents who want to get, play pickleball, love pickleball, to use those courts and enjoy them. Thank you, I'm complete with my comment.
Councilmember Hearn, did you raise your hand? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I agree with quite a bit. I'll probably make a little friendly amendment on it. But, you know, coming into tonight, I had the eight PM, or eight AM to eight PM actually written down. So it's kind of interesting to hear that reiterated. I think one of the things that I'd like to just add to that is just completely getting rid of the use of the lights. I think that'll solve the issue of the dust to dawn and the late summer here where it starts to get darker before eight. And again, I'm open to seven, you know, to talking about the time for that. But I think if we just get rid of the lights, that gets rid of the issue as far as for like the dust to dawn, like when does that mean? Give a hard stop point. They know that it's going to be done at that point if people want to play in pitch black from five PM to eight PM. Yeah, I guess more power to them. And I think that's a really fair compromise. I mean, pickle in the middle, that's in Lake Elmo, it's twenty-four seven. If people want to play pickleball outside of those hours, they have options for it. I know there's another pickleball indoor facility right across in Woodbury, there's ones in Oakdale. So I think there's lots of options.
There's one in Lake Elmo.
The pickle in the middle.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. And so there's lots of options for people who do want to be playing pickleball outside of those hours. It was nice to hear that the Lake Elmo Pickleball Organization actually uses that eight to ten o'clock time as well. So like, it is being used by the community. Obviously, it'd be different if it was being used by all non-residents. I think it's a different conversation. We are trying to serve the health, you know, there's a lot of health benefits to playing pickleball, just like there is to negative health benefits, having to listen to it all day. So I think it's trying to find that compromise with it there. And then, so I think like the lights would be one thing that we maybe think about changing. And then just to add to it as well, I think we just need to get rid of the practice wall. I think that just needs to go all together. I don't know if necessarily limiting the fifty thousand dollars, was it, or forty? I can't remember what you said.
Fifty was, and that's a guess.
Yep. I don't know if necessarily limiting that to the sound barriers on specific sides. I think I would just leave it at to fifty thousand for noise reduction, whether that be from material use along the fence. Some natural hardscapes, I think, you know, combining those could be a great option. You know, to your point about, you know, obviously, we're going to have to look at the fencing and the structural integrity of that. If that costs a little bit extra, it's probably going to be worth it. We're over five hundred thousand dollars into this project with Pebble Park by itself. I think we're kind of committed to it. And I think it does serve a good purpose. I think we just need to find that compromise. So I guess I'd like to make a friendly amendment. Feel free to change, I think maybe the hours, well, I'll step back. I'll wait to hear about the hours from Mayor here and Nick as well.
Yeah, I think, I agree with you, Councilman Holtz, that nine to six is fair, especially with the school hours changing as well. And hearing comments about people can't even, you know, go out on their deck and enjoy a burger without hearing all this percussive noise. So I am on the side of nine AM to six. And along with the sound deadening on Pebble Park and especially the landscaping as well. I think that would help a lot.
And I should clarify, it was just for Pebble.
Okay.
And. Tablin for the hours. It did not include Lyons.
Yeah.
What about Ivy?
It did not include Ivy.
So I think that's, I guess, another piece that I would.
We don't have lights at Ivy, do we? Well, I was taking some notes and I really appreciate all the discussion on this. I guess in my mind, I was thinking of an eight to eight timeframe because people do like to get out in the morning. Most people get their days started. Whether they're getting ready for school or going to school, I think that's, in my mind, a reasonable hour to begin things. I think eight PM in combination with, and I don't know if I would necessarily put a set dollar amount on it now. I would like to maybe direct Public Works to take a look at the site's sports Sonic Guard, something like that. They look like they're more fabric barriers to see what those costs actually are and what it would take. Because maybe we can do more than what we think of, or, you know, maybe it costs more, I don't know. In addition to, we mentioned the, what are they, deciduous trees, right? Put up some pine trees. They grow three feet a year. Definitely help out with that. I, you know, have some experience with that in my backyard with the trail and they definitely help with some sound. I did look up Quiet Strike and that's more like, it looks like it's for a paddle per se. It's not a noise dampening on the court, correct?
I think they have a cartel of products. There's just another one that has talked about what they have across the spectrum for solubility.
Right. I would, I mean, if we're going to make an act on this, I think we need to incorporate some things like, you know, some signs for people that are using, please be respectful of the neighbors around here and make it, you know. I like the idea of, if you're playing a sport or having some fun and there's people talking or whatever, you can generally keep that. Just a gentle reminder that you're not the only ones around there, but also eliminating the need for music boxes or boom boxes or whatever they call them nowadays. Incorporate the removal of the practice board at Pebble. And I guess I would just like to have a motion that's maybe more all encompassing of those things than we just talk about those things. So, you know, I'd like to see the timeframe. I agree with no lights. Because even after, I think, well, it's eight forty-three, it's dark outside now. And, you know, the sun's setting, here's the fall and sun set in the springs a little later. And yes, we have the solstice, but keep that eight to eight. I guess that's kind of where I'm coming at for this. Landscaping, some signs on the courts to remind people that there are neighbors and to be respectful. No loud music. Turn off the lights. Look at some sort of sound dampening to be reported with a cost associated with it. So we can make an informed decision on what that actual product is and how it should act. That's my recommendation.
Would your intent to be to change hours for all sites? Because we have not received a single complaint from Lyons.
I haven't heard of any complaints from Lyons, Tablin, or?
Except for Councilmember Craigus.
Well, right, we've got one.
Does this count?
And I, yes. And I think that the one from Ivy is, I think those are the courts that have been there the longest, correct?
Lyons was first.
Oh, Lyons Park and then Ivy?
Yeah.
Okay, I said corrected. So I think that's more of a parking concern and I think.
We had one noise complaint.
One noise complaint, okay. So I'd probably put that time constraint on Pebble to begin with. And if other places become an issue, we can address those at this time. And maybe that's short sighted, but that's where I'm at today.
Personally, I would prefer it be across the board. I think you just keep it consistent for all the parks. If we close one at eight, all the other three parks are all, having all their people go to the one, it's going to be a big issue. Again, I think there's plenty of indoor options year round, twenty-four seven, for people who want to play after eight PM.
Question, do we, we don't have lights at Tablin, do we?
No.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think the lights are just, they're difficult to manage. You get that outdoor lighting, there are some things you can do, but I think they're just, they're too difficult to manage. Especially with some residents that are close and, you know, the foliage is gone from some of the trees, it can be an issue. And it's great when they green up and stuff, but that's why I like pine trees.
As you prepare your motion, maybe think about if you want the lights to happen immediately or if this is all on a twenty-six plan or?
I mean, I, my thought would be immediate with the lights, immediate with removing that, the practice wall. And immediate with the hour changes, or as immediate as can be, you know? I mean, obviously, we ought to post it and do those things. But then, I agree with Mayor that, you know, maybe we don't want to rush. The sound mitigation has to, I think, needs to happen, but let's not rush it. Let's have a conversation, make sure we get the right material.
Well, I think we can give direction to staff to come back to council with a recommendation. It also gives the Parks Commission to take a look at the various types of sound barriers. And, I mean, just looking at a couple of them, there is, there has to be a benefit to those. Yes, Councilmember Dragicic.
Mayor, I would, I would, as Councilmember Hearn, is that we should apply these universally? So we don't move players from one park to the next and create a problem where someone comes in and says, well, you know, we have the same problem and you didn't do anything for us. If we make them uniform, I think that would just be a better situation all the way around, in my opinion.
I am rescinding my motion. Motion includes, so this is hours that then are a blend between the five of us. So still not what you said. At all sites, hours from eight AM to seven PM. At all sites, no longer using lights for pickleball, starting as soon as able. Remove sound wall at, the wall, practice wall that good people use that I don't, at pickleball at Pebble. Direct staff for determining materials to use for noise mitigation, including materials and vegetation options at pickleball.
At Pebble.
Pebble Park.
It was eight to eight, you said, right?
Eight to seven.
Eight to seven.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with the seven o'clock, you know, and starting there. Again, I still think it's a really fair compromise between the pickleball players and the residents that live nearby. Maybe next year, we hear more voices from the pickleball community than of concerns the opposite way. But I think I'm fine with the time. I really, I appreciate everything else in the motion too. And I don't think that extra hour, or the one less hour should be the reason we don't go for it.
Councilmember Dragicic.
I'll go along with the motion if the majority of the other city councils support that. With the understanding that once we get, if we get sound barriers up, we can reconsider extending the hour to eight, if the sound barriers are effective.
That's a good point.
You know, I think that if they do what they're supposed to, and we get the trees in and we get the sound down, maybe we can extend it till eight o'clock, give one more hour of play. But, you know, in the interest of striking a compromise between all of us, I think that's a good compromise, you know, that Councilor Holtz has brought up. And should help resolve the issue in some of being immediate.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, come here in a couple of weeks, since that's going to be at seven thirty and without any lights, you're not playing anyway, so.
Councilor Holtz, do you have in your motion the radio, the boom boxes?
I did not. And that's because I don't know how easily we would be able to have the sheriff's department enforce a noise that's created from a boom box, from a speaker, from a cell phone, from a speaker that's in their car. Like, just, there are, it is entirely a valid concern. I don't know how easily enforced it would be.
You could just do signs.
Yeah, I agree with, and I think we can let staff know without saying the motion like this, develop some signs as well, stop that, but.
Yeah, I mean, with all the discussion around the times, how? Yeah, I mean, with all the discussion around the times, how, I mean, to the enforcement question, how do we enforce this? Because people have been so used to starting at seven, playing till eight or until the sun goes down.
That is, and this came up in the Parks Commission as well, and I believe this response was with ours. That is something we, we could ask our. Fantastic partners, the Sheriff's Department to increase patrols, but we are going to have to do an education process too. We're going to have to reach out to obviously, where, to the pickleball associations. And there would be some people that don't get the message, but the reservation system will have to be. Updated to allow those hours, but yeah, it'll take time. It's not going to immediately be on day one, but I think it's going to be a multi-faceted approach.
And we'll have, we'll obviously have until next year to, to get that message out. I mean, we're past anybody playing beyond eight o'clock if we're turning the lights off. As, as soon as possible here. I mean, we'll have some time to get the message out, I think as well and. But yeah, it is still going to be, I'm sure, challenging and I guess that's hopefully where, continue to get feedback from the, the community as well if people are still. Going out and not following the rules and.
I can, I can probably support the motion as it is, as it's probably. We're probably shooting a dart at a board a little bit anyway, trying to hit something that makes compromise for. Residents that live there and the pickleballers are using and hopefully we, we can strike a balance that, that helps. So yeah, I can, I can, I can support that motion.
We could, you know, place signs about the operating hours and, but five years will be fine.
We do have a communications director, communications coordinator that can help get the message out.
And I should clarify that my, I mean, it's, we don't say in the motion, but I mean, my goal with the material was not to get material up this season. Cause this is gonna, it's gonna take time to research and determine the, the best bang for the buck. It might not be the largest noise coefficient. It might be the third or the fourth, but it might be material that weighs a little bit less, doesn't destroy the fence. Cause not all of them do, some of them do. The best ones will destroy the fence, but are there other ones that are still a good being for the buck?
All right. I'm going to call a question. All those in favor of the motion as Councilmember Holt presented, please signify by saying aye. As opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. All right. We did move. Again, thank you very much for all your comments and feel free to stick around and listen about. Lyons Park Playground replacement. If you wish.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lyons Park Playground. So this playground was installed in two thousand. It has currently surpassed its lifespan that we've set at twenty-five years and is slated for. Replacement in next year in twenty twenty-six. We recently did, as Parks Master Plan, we did a survey and of that, of that master plan, fifty-eight percent of those that are surveyed. Listed Lyons Park as one of the number, number one most parks visited by users. Survey results also showed that that park was his second most common, common activity to use at the park was the playground. This was brought in front of the Parks Commission on two different occasions. One was just to discuss what they would like there for a playground and then again for a final recommendation that they'd make to city council. In addition to that, staff did present a survey at the National Night Out Event where we did present all five options to the community. They had an option to vote, children, adults, seniors, everyone put a number on a card and put in the. In a cookie jar that was later counted up for a tally of votes on our, on our, on our options. The Parks Commission did recommend option number four, so they should be for the city council tonight. Would be, would they like to approve a newly constructed playset at Lyons Park using option number four and activate seed three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Our fiscally, our impacts are outlined in the twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-five capital improvement plan. The current CIP has three hundred thousand dollars allotted to this Parks replacement. Those additional funds would come out of the Parks dedication funds and not additional CIP dollars. With that, I can show you any options or take any questions.
Councilmember Hearn.
Well, I don't want to discuss it.
Phrase as a question.
You had to phrase it as a question, dude.
Well, I'll just wait. I, I, I'll wait because it's mostly a discussion point.
All right. So no questions?
No questions.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to table the discussion on the purchase and installing of a new playground. Set as proposed by city staff at Lyons Park with expenses not to exceed three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
So note if it's tabled, there's no discussion.
I'm stuck then, I don't know what to do.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to purchase and install new playgrounds set as proposed by the city staff at Lyons Park. With expenses not to exceed three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
I'll support that.
Thank you. Discussion.
Love to. Thank you. Thanks for that workaround. Yeah, so. And I meant to mention this actually in the last discussion as well. I, I really appreciate the Parks discussion, Parks. Commission's meetings discussion with you guys about the, the noise barriers and with this, I thought it was really helpful and they, they got a lot of the questions. Answered coming in tonight. I, I think this choice is great. I'm all on board with their choice. My thought with tabling it is we're having a workshop with them next week. I think there is a lot of. Moving parts. I think we've had a lot of conversation around is how do we want to manage these individual playgrounds moving forward here? Do we want to be spending two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars every single year replacing these parks? My viewpoint is I, I see it that people are using parks nowadays more as, they're using them in organized sports, pickleball. SCVAA or organized sports. There's less people going to the playgrounds and utilizing these. And I, I, I think that's just the reality and I think as we're deciding where to be putting our dollars. I think that should, should go into it. This comes back to, you know, with the workshop where we were talking about the CIP and again, I. I think it's something that we need to look at bringing that CIP number down so we can impact the, the budget in a positive way. So my thought on tabling this is I'd rather have the discussion next week with the Parks Commission as far as. How do we want to manage? These playground repairs, this two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, not repairs, but. Replacements that essentially we're going to be having to do every single year based off the number of playgrounds we have. Is that the path we want to go down or do we want to consolidate these parks? And, and when I say this, you know, where I'm going with this is, maybe we want to spend more than three hundred thousand on Lyons Park because we're not going to be. Replacing parks the next three years because we want to go all in on Lyons Park, right? Maybe that's the case. I'm, I'm not against spending that money. Or that design. I just think we need to have that discussion of is this the path we want to go down? Before we pull the trigger on three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and kind of set that in motion and it's next week, so it, you know, it's. Not far away where we can have that conversation.
I'm glad you brought up the second part of that discussion because I was thinking that's the one park I see get used. Right? Fairly regularly. So I do like the second part of that discussion. I, and I, I think it would be good to have that conversation about. What do we think about park consolidation? It's something. That I've thought about is when we get all these parks, when new neighborhoods go in, sometimes I think it gets to be unmanageable. Both from an operational standpoint, well, mainly from an operational standpoint and then a maintenance standpoint in the long run. So. That's my thought. If somebody else wanted to have discussion before something else may happen.
Mayor, if I can just add to that real quick, I mean, that really is my thought on this is Lyons Park. Really is, I mean, it's like the central location. Obviously that could change and, you know, the, with the seventy-seven acres, that's gonna. Move things apart a little bit, but it's still downtown Lake Elmo. You know, yeah, what if we didn't replace playgrounds in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight and we put those funds all towards. Lyons Park instead, right? I just, that really is my.
It would be a good discussion.
Thought with this is have that discussion since we have it next week.
In terms of timeframe, was the intent with this to purchase and potentially get installed before the snow flies?
No, no. So that'd be in twenty twenty-six. So the reason for bringing it forward at this point was just to get mainly on their schedule, knowing that it's going to be a bigger playset. If you look back at the two that we did along with Pebble and Demonteville, we were really pushing the snowflakes by the time we got everything all said and done.
Gotcha. I mean, I. I was strongly considering pulling this to have this exact conversation. On the basis of, we've, this has been, I mean, this dates back to even with Dale and Lisa and Katrina. Like we've talked about this in terms of consolidation, whether or not it happens, I think it. Next week would be a fantastic opportunity for that conversation because hypothetically, maybe that central one is not at the, the sports site. Maybe it's here. Maybe it is at the sports site and then we're left in a conundrum for what to do at this site because it is central and heavily used. But I, this isn't a ninety thousand dollar one in a neighborhood that needs, that's falling apart. This is substantially more. So I think it's a worthwhile group discussion given we've already had the ball rolling on this concept.
Anything to add, Councilmember Jagicich?
I tend to agree. Maybe we should have that discussion with the park commission and then revisit this.
Anything, Councilmember Craigus?
I guess I might be ignorant to this, but what do you mean by consolidating the parks?
Well, so long, longstanding policy in Lake Elmo had been when a new development gets put in. They get their own park, which to my line of thinking is. Maybe, how do I, how, how, how do I put this? It's like, like. People in the neighborhoods only go to the neighborhood park and, and it, so then we ended up with many parks all over the city. That I think at one point in time, maybe I was, I was reading through and how much time it took just to collect the trash. From all the parks in the city. It's like an all day event. So I was like, we've got all these parks and then they, they all cost to maintain them or when we're going to upgrade them, right? So you're multiplying that by X amount. So is there? Is there a thought process that maybe looking at our parks and maybe doing. You know, more consolidated, not to, you know, when I look at Cleese Park. It's kind of tucked back in there, be great for some uses. Do I see kids on that playground as much as I see them on in Lake Elmo Downtown Park? Abs- absolutely not.
Yeah, there's kids there all the time.
So I think that's kind of the discussion that would happen with the Parks Commission and maybe generate some of that thought process. Are you on, on board with that?
Yeah, I mean, further discussion with them, I don't see an issue with.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to table this until after the discussion with the parks.
Support.
All right, we have a motion and a second table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council reports. Councilmember Jagicich.
One item to report, you know, we talked a little bit about our stormwater utility and I had some discussion with city attorney. Before this meeting about our stormwater ordinance, I think there's some changes we probably need to make. But it probably makes sense to do them after we've looked at the whole stormwater charge system, which we seem to have somewhere on our radar screen. But I just want to bring that to the council's attention and hopefully as we move forward, we'll get a chance to make great improvements.
Councilmember Holtz.
The Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Committee met last week and noise complaints have drastically gone down. It's not necessarily because of a, a change per se. I, I think their, the behavior of complaining has, has just changed, but. We are going to be trying to, on the positive side, focus on positives of the airport. So the fellow chair and myself as co-chairs are going to be reaching out to our school districts. To see if there's interest in creating an airport club at the high school level and increasing field trip possibilities for middle schoolers. As that airport is the largest training airport in the metro and they do see themselves as kind of a pipeline for people who want to go into the profession. So if there's a way to help, they already do flying lessons for kids as it is, but if there's a way to add to that. That encouragement and getting them to the airport to know the positive impacts. So we're going to start that communication process soon.
Really bigger than Blaine.
In terms of training.
Oh, all right. Interesting. Okay. Well, I'd be remiss to say that I'm, I'm really excited about some of the things that will, will happen next. On the thirteenth, hundredth year anniversary celebration and some of the things that are going on this month. We've got a band, you know, we're going to have a flyover and we got a few big tents. I know the Rotary's selling some beer and seltzer and we're going to have, what, five, six? Seven food trucks and we're going to have some fireworks. So, I don't know. I've handed out a few flyers. I keep mentioning to the people. Wherever, whenever and even inviting their local friends from neighboring communities to come in and hang out. So I'm excited about that and that, that's what I have to report. Councilmember.
Couple bounty houses as well.
Are you, we got that, we got that comment? All right.
Kiddos can have some fun as well. Other than that, no report.
No report.
Staff reports.
No report.
No report. Ms. Johnson.
Two quick things. Reed Park, in my weekly review, I said it's been started twice now. Hopefully this week. It's still not actually moving. This week that should happen and then we have. Had a couple of issues with our booster station. We've been able to maintain and. Keep fire protection in the Inwood Tower. That correction should occur tomorrow and be back to normal.
Any? Question? The, the turf, University Minnesota turf, did that get installed?
Yeah, so an update there. They have planted it, blanketed it, irrigation's going and that grass is up. Two to three inches and they're using half of the water that they predicted. So they're literally using very little water. Obviously we've had some heavy dew and rain.
Some rain and, yeah.
But they're overwhelmingly surprised. So good things on that and. They anticipate their irrigation will be off in the next couple of weeks period, so.
Good Lake Elmo soil.
Mayor and Council, just a couple of things. Engineering will be having pre-construction meetings this week for the. I ninety-four lift station force man project, which they anticipate starting to put up traffic control and pre-warn signs next week. On a preliminary schedule and then at the end of the week, we'll have a, a pre-construction meeting for the demolition of the water tower. Langley Court just south of the railroad tracks in downtown and that'll be sometime later yet this month.
Yeah, assuming all the notifications have been given to the residences around the water tower in that area so they know what's going on.
And we'll work with those directly impacted on access.
Is it going to come down like piece by piece or is it going to go?
Typically this contractor cuts it by pieces and sets it on the ground with a crane. It's, it, they'll move in, in the morning and that thing will be down and gone by the evening. So. There's a couple more challenges with this site with the power line and such, but potentially it could be gone at the same night. So. Then there'd be some restoration and some pipe work below grade foundation following.
Counselor.
No report.
All right. With that, we will adjourn this evening's meeting at nine oh nine.